Welcome to this, to the night's regular business meeting. We will have a moment of silent prayer for our invocation. It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 21st regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk. I would like to move item 21, which is Resolution 2024-135, ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County. Specifically, Code of Clayton County Appendix A zoning dealing with definitions of small box discount variety stores. I would like to put that on the regular agenda from the consent agenda, under the zoning as well.
What's the number?
Item 21, 2024-135. Also, we will not be having the presentation of the Department of Georgia Purple Heart Foundation designation. It will happen June 4th. Are there any others?
Yes, Chair. Item number 31, BOC 2302-0284. They've requested a delay on this. Can we go ahead and move this off as well?
Are you tabling it or are you just removing it altogether?
We want to table it, and the attorney is here.
Are you agreeing with that, Mr. Hick?
Yes, we requested to table the mail-in progress, but there are a few other details to be moved.
Okay, is that your motion to remove it?
That is my motion to move that, but there's also, I know, is this one we have a attorney read?
Well, what day did you want to table it?
June 18th, I'm sorry. Next meeting in June. So, do we have public hearing on that? So those folks that are here for that public hearing?
Yes.
We notify them that that public hearing will be as well as June 18th with this?
I believe that this, oh, and good evening. I believe that this item has not yet had a public hearing, so then it, when it goes to June 18th, that will also include a public hearing for this item.
So for clarity, there will be no public hearing nor reading of this zoning request?
Correct.
Second one, BOC?
Let's take this one first. That's your motion. I'll suck in the motion. Are there any questions on it? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item is BOC 2311-0372. They would like to withdraw that, so I'd like to go ahead and table that as well. That's item 32.
Is this a table or you're removing?
Table.
Okay. To which date?
To June, I'm sorry, to June 18th.
Is this also Mr. Hicks? Or is this somebody different?
This is different. They've already contacted.
Okay, so the applicant's requesting. All right, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Any others? All right, hearing none.
Mr. Chair, I would like to offer as, because I do not believe it's on here, which will be Resolution 2024-141. This was an item that was discussed in the agenda meeting, but was inadvertently left off of the agenda for today. It's a resolution authorizing Kensington Home Builders to obtain a temporary construction easement over certain property in Clayton County to lay and construct utility pipes, structures, and/or facilities; to authorize the Clayton County Water Authority to obtain a permanent easement over said property to lay, construct, and maintain utility pipes, structures, and/or facilities; to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place that on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Chair, and also Attorney Reed, for that last one on 32 that we removed, the BOC 2311-0372, was there a public hearing with that one as well? Just to notify the folks that might be here for that as well.
Yes, it's mine, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I received an email from our zoning administrator. The applicant requested that item, agenda item 32 be withdrawn, as such a public hearing will not be occurring for that.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I received an email regarding one of my zoning issues.
Item 33. They want to table for 60 days until July 16th.
Yeah, that's on.
Okay, you're going to offer that as a motion, and then, I guess, also offer that up as anyone that's here for their public hearing, that they will not have to attend until July? What's the item number on it, Madam Clerk?
Item 33, July 16th.
Okay, yes, I moved that item 33 be moved to the next meeting, which is June 18th?
No, I think she said they asked for July 16th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
60 days, July 16th.
July 16th, it is. Okay, so my motion is to move item 33, which is BOC 2401-0387, move it to the July 16th meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Yes, I have something that was inadvertently confused or whatever regarding the class of 2004 of North Clayton High School Alumni function that I am co-hosting with them to be on the agenda. It was, anyway, it was confused with something else. So I would like both items, the one that's on there to remain and the 2004 class, to be added.
So do we just revise that resolution to include 2004?
No, no, no. Two separate, two separate events, two different dates.
Different days, okay.
Yes, one is June 23rd, I think, and the other is September.
What was that, Commissioner?
No, she's adding that.
I'm adding.
That was inadvertently left off, apparently.
Yes, and I'm trying to see if I can find that particular resolution, okay. This would be Resolution 2024-142, which is a resolution authorizing Commissioner Gail Hambrick to partner with North Clayton High School Alumni Association to host a picnic for the North Clayton High School class of 2004, I'm sorry, class of 2004 day event at Flat Shoals Park, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. In this event, as Commissioner indicated, will be on Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, at Flat Shoals Park from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Now, that's the one we're at. That's your motion to add that?
Yes, that's the one to add.
All right, I'll suck it. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And is that on the consent agenda?
Yes, it should be on the consent agenda. There is one on the consent agenda with the date of September.
I got you. Any others? All right, hearing none. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Our next item is the proclamation, Clayton County observes May 2024 as Older Americans Month. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes May 2024 as Older Americans Month. Whereas, May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas, through their wealth of life experiences and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant culture and historical knowledge. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, Clayton County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting their commitment to inclusivity and connectiveness. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Older Americans Month. This year's Mayfest theme, "Globe Beyond Limits", underscores the boundless potential and unwavering spirit of older Americans to transcend barriers, defy stereotypes, and illuminate the world with their resilience, creativity, and passion. It witness thereof, I herein too set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 21st day of May in the year of 2024.
As alone they are, they are definitely alone.
Mr. Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Our next item is item number 27, Resolution 2024-129, presented by our Chief Staff.
Attorney Charles Reed.
Resolution 2024-129 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to abandon approximately 0.231 acres of right-of-way of Creekside Trace at the intersection of Eastley Right-of-Way of Fieldstone Court to authorize the chairman or his designate to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. Prior to the board adopting this resolution is required that we hold a public hearing to hear from the public, and then, following that, then the board can make a motion as it deems fit to either approve or deny the resolution.
So this time we're going into a public hearing?
Yes.
This time we're going into a public hearing for this matter? If there's anyone here to like to speak in favor of, please come to the podium. Anyone in favor of this request, please. Please state your name for us and the county of your residence.
Good afternoon. Correll Johnson, Clayton County. I purchased land in this area, and the problem that I was experiencing that is the easement or getting to my property. So this would clear up how I can to access my land. And basically, we're just trying to build a single-family home for me and my family.
Anybody else?
Yes. I'm Johnny Brown. I'm one of the builders for Infinity Estates in Brown's Construction. We've been working with Mr. Correll, you know, the entire time over nine months. Seeing that as we have secured construction loans and everything, we would like to obtain the land if it's abandoned, so we can have a right-of-way to build its home in that area.
Ma'am, Gavin, if you can say? Is there anyone else like to speak in favor of? And just a quick question, I know you and I have spoke on this, but just to make sure that the board is clear as well as myself, there's no other easement or entryway onto the property unless we, unless this is approved, correct? Onto the property that you purchased, your landlocked?
That is correct.
Does anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Y'all can have a seat.
Hello, my name is Rita Clark. I'm on the Board of Directors for Fairfield Community Association where this land is located. Fairfield is one of the largest single-family development in Clayton County with 544 homes. We have over 85% of owner occupied. The land that they're considering, John Whelan, when he built Fairfield, did not, he didn't purchase that land for a reason, because it's basically wetland. And the address right now is 93 Fieldstone Court, which is part of Fairfield. And not knowing if they will be considered part of our community. And there is, I believe, another entrance to that land coming in from the hidden branch or, I think it's the other?
Carrington. Corn's Crossing?
Yeah, I think it's from that area that they could come into this particular land. It is my hope that you all will consider, you know, because there's, we're having a drainage, flooding problem. And we've reached out to the, to the board for over two years, for the commissioners for two years, trying to get assistance. Right now, we have, that property is right there over Line Creek. It's dumping a lot of water into Fairfield, and it's causing erosion and causing our buildings, endangering our buildings and also additional homes. And it's our hope that when you all are making these considerations, that you think about all the flooding. I know that when you all had your, were awarded the grant for the Flint River Commission for project, we were apparently not part of that, even though we had been petitioning and talking to you all for over two years. So we think that that will have an adverse of impact, because there's so much water already coming in, there's so much new development that's adversely impacting Fairfield right now. So it is our hope that you will reconsider that. There is another way for them in, but that land is going to, I thought the law was that you had to get, I guess, approval from the owners of that little strip of land that you all now are considering abandoning. So I don't know what the abandonment procedure is for Clayton County, but it is our hope that you will not allow this to happen, because that land, I don't even know if it perks for them to put a civic system out there. I don't, you know, they have to go over somebody's land to get to that little stretch. So again, we're 544 homes. We're being adversely impacted by all this water coming down Line Creek, and we do need some assistance from the county. We've got 544 homes. We all pay our taxes, and they keep going up, and it seems like there's no consideration given to all the flooding that our residents are, you know, experiencing right now. So it is my hope that you will not allow this.
Well, the only thing, just so we're clear, the only thing we are considering through the resolution is abandoning a small strip of land.
Yeah.
Whatever else the law dictates as to how that is governed from there is not on us.
But that small strip of land is through these two homeowners' land. In order for them to get to that land, they've got to go through two homes that are currently on Fieldstone Court.
And there are some legal requirements for that as well.
And also, let me add, yes, I've spoken to you all several times about the flooding issue, and it's horrible out there. And we're still working on that. The big problem we're having is a lot of that is on private property, which is, which is having some major issues over there with that.
Yeah, but we were hoping that we would have been considered for the grants, because we spoke to you about grant money, we spoke to you about, you know, we've been trying for two years, so.
But that, as far as your Fairfield was, that wasn't even there at the time of that, so.
Yeah, but I know that it didn't take overnight for you all to get a grant, so I'm thinking that in the year or whatever led up to you all being awarded the grant, we could have been considered, because we've been trying for a very long time.
Most definitely, and we are still working on that.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, my name's Baron Tiller. I'm a resident on Fieldstone Court, a couple of houses up from where they're going through it. Actually, that's, that's an abandoned roadway from Creekside when they built it. I'm trying to find out what's the legality of it. My knowledge is, once they abandon the street, the joint and homeowners get the option of purchasing it first before anyone else.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, so that clears it up for me. But yeah, it is a wetland. Actually, I've been there prior, I've been there since 2000. They built Corn's Crossing behind me. I'm getting flooded from Corn's Crossing. The detention point is at the back of that right-of-way we're talking about, Corn's Crossing Detention Point. So even if they cut a road, we got to deal with EPD as far as water runoff. So you want to take that in consideration also, all right?
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition of? All right, that concludes our public hearing. At this time, Mr. Reed, we need to address the resolution.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the abandonment of this tract of land?
I have a question.
Yes.
Got a question before?
Yes.
Yes.
Before the motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hambrick.
And I guess somebody here with the expertise, tell me if abandoning whatever this property is, how it will affect the folk that are already there? I mean, will this contribute to the water problem? And I definitely understand that, because up in my area, we've had problems. So I need, I want to know that before I even consider this.
So the portion that we're dealing with is a stub of a street that when the subdivision was built, it goes to a dead end. The gentleman that came up and first spoke, it's my understanding that he owns property that is not at the end of that, but just slightly beyond to the north of where that stub is. And there is no way for him to be able to get to his property from Creeks, from Creekside, I'm sorry, Fieldstone Court, from that little stub. So he is asking, or has asked, that the board consider abandoning it so that there can be some way to allow him to be able to have access, either if the two people who are adjacent landowners, if they have no interest or there can't be something worked out between them, then it will be advertised for a public sale. He'll be one of other bidders, perhaps. And then whoever purchases it will own that strip. Presumably, if he is the winning owner, then he will develop that so he'll be able to have access to his property as, again, which is just beyond where this stub ends.
I appreciate that, Mr. Reed, but it still does not answer what I was asking. And I, I don't know, has the county been out to look at this?
No.
Property of this area, or?
Well, he is building a single-family home, a home for himself. It's not a subdivision. He is trying to build a home for himself, to my knowledge.
But because I'm so close to this water problem that, you know, we deal with up in my area, the Flint and Camp Creek and all that, so.
The land right now is vacant. I mean, it's just trees, grass, however you want to call it. So if, if he acquires his property and he develops it, it will have a driveway on it. Then his property obviously would be a single-family home and whatever square footage of the impervious area for the driveway and the roof would be just like any other single-family resident. Will it have a noticeable effect on flooding?
Right.
One home? It would be difficult to determine, so.
In my view, can I?
Yes.
My thing is this, literally, they're not exaggerating, speaking about the flooding issue in Fairfield, and how long they've been dealing with this. Yes, I want to see the gentleman build his home.
Right.
But right now, with the level of flooding and the impact, they have a sidewalk by the clubhouse that is caving in. My thing is, it's affecting a lot. I would like to see and make a determination instead of just abandoning a piece of land. To me, there's a reason why the developer didn't purchase that land. What is that reason? We don't know unless we ask them. But that's, that's my take right now. Right now, with the state of their community, I just think we need to really look and hold on to that and watch what we can hear. If we have it, then I would suggest we, in a sense, might want to look into it before we just abandon it.
And just to be clear, and Jeff, you're the director, you can stay here. What we're talking about is a street, a road. So it's not, it's not, it's county-owned property because it's a street. It's different, if this was a lot that the county was giving or abandoning or something along those lines. So the question is, and again, this is not directed for you to make a decision one way or the other, but will a stub of a street, whether the county owns that or has someone else do something with it, will that affect the overall flooding issue at this, in this subdivision? And that's a decision that this board will be making in determining whether you choose to abandon this or not.
And so the process, just to be clear, if that, if that property is abandoned by the county, what is the, what are the steps or what is the procedure in a private citizen obtaining that?
So the first step would be that the adjacent property owners to the abandoned property will have the op- property will have the opportunity to decide whether they would like to purchase it. If we can't, if the county cannot come to an agreement with either of those as to the cost of the purchase of that, then it would go through the normal process of, of, um, getting rid of county-owned property, which would either require a auctioneer, it required a sealed bid, or other process, a state law process of how you, the county would get rid of. But the first step would be the two adjacent property owners to the, on both sides of that stub, to determine, to reach out to them first if they have an interest.
Did you, just kind of notch it, was there, was there two homes already adjacent to that property?
Yes.
Two existing homes?
There's two existing, two existing homes, one on each side of that stub.
Okay.
So that, those two would be the first two people that the county would reach out to if this board decided to, um, to abandon that section.
So, what we're voting on tonight is not to abandon?
No, we're voting to abandon.
To abandon. I have.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Sounds like if we abandon the property, it really won't have anything of that much of, if any, problem as far as the flooding. Now, it sounds like to me with the flooding, and I wanna ask the Office of Resilience, uh, have we checked out this property they're talking about that caused the flooding in the past? Not this strip that we're talking about now, but the past problem?
Good evening, Commissioners, yeah, if I'm looking at the right parcel, uh, we do see some, the, some floodplain there.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm looking at the right parcel, everything's to the south of that. So, there's, to say whether it's gonna cause additional flooding, we can't say, but we have, we have been out there before, um, to look at these, these properties.
Okay, and is it anything?
Well, it's just like we would, you know, with the others, we would look into some federal funding if there's any available to attempt to, um, mitigate that.
Oh, okay. So, are we working on that now, or we will be working on it?
Yes, well, it's, it's in consideration, yes.
Okay.
And I guess my thing is, the impact on it, it's, it might have minimal impact, but if it only takes, if it, if it only takes a thousand, and they get enough, and they already get nine hundred and ninety-nine gallons, that one, one gallon is not a lot, but that's enough to put it over the top.
Any other questions? For the motion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any other questions?
Not a question, but I would like to reiterate that the Office of Resilience will be checking for grants and add this to the list of communities and all that we are checking on, investigating and all that, that, uh, this community will be added to that list.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Two, one, it passes. Next.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item number twenty-eight, which is the board appointment.
First board, board appointment is to the Clayton Center Community Service Board, Victoria Williams term, on the Clayton Center Community Service Board, will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, new terms for three years, and will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. It's a full board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Has anybody spoken with, um?
Ms. Williams.
Victoria, yes.
Uh, no, I have not. If you don't have one, we'll hold it till next time.
Right.
All right, next board appointment is to the Library Board, Crystal Perry resigned from the Library Board, the existing term will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, if you would, hold that one as well.
I, I do have somebody for that.
They live in District Three?
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next, uh, board appointment is to the Library Board, Ms. Dawn Gates was removed by the Library Board, members due to inactivity.
Excuse me, Chairman, no, they actually do live in District Three.
You sure about that?
I'm positive about that.
Well, let's go back.
Rewind, come on.
Is there a recommendation?
Yes, sir, yes, Chair.
Yes, well, who is that, Commissioner Davis?
I'd like to, uh, recommend Ms. Salima Abdullah Langford for Library Board.
All right, I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next, board appointment is also to the Library, Dawn Gates was removed by the Library Board, members due to inactivity and lack of attendance. The existing term will expire on May fifth, twenty twenty-six, District One. I would like to offer Ms. Quinn Lee, and I'm gonna spell her name, 'cause I know I, that's not her name, Q-U-Y-N-H, Lee, L-E. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hammer, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Our next items are zoning hearings, starting with item number thirty-one. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is one more speaker, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten minutes. When the timer runs out, the speaker will be expected to cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first, applicants in cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal, opponents of the zoning decision item shall have no right for rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Please remember abusive, profan, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Madam Clerk, which number did you call off?
Uh, our first one will be, um, number, I'm sorry, item number, um, thirty-one.
Okay, I believe we removed thirty-one and thirty-two.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We tabled those, I think first one should be item thirty-three.
Twenty-one.
No.
Would it be what?
Item twenty.
Twenty-one, from, from the previous, is that what she just read off?
The second to last in order of the BLC number, so I have that one going after item number thirty-eight, but as far as thirty-one, I apologize, that has been tabled, and then thirty-two was withdrawn, and then thirty-three was tabled until July sixteenth, so we are actually on item number thirty-four. Uh, my apologies, that is, uh, BLC twenty-four oh one dash zero three nine one, which is a conditional use permit.
Okay, all right. All right. Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Uh, Tyler McSwain, representing Planning and Zoning Department, uh, I believe they were on item, uh, thirty-four, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so item number thirty-four for the records, BLC two four zero one zero three nine one, this is a conditional use permit request for an auto repair shop located at sixty-five thirty-nine in Highway forty-two. Uh, the request is by Jamal Williams, and again, this is for the CUP, uh, and the location again is sixty-five thirty-nine. Um, the location is connected to an existing gas station, uh, visual representation is here on, here for you all. The request, again, is for an applicant to use an end unit of an existing building, uh, for automotive repair shop, and a conditional use is required within the zoning district. Uh, there had been a prior, uh, tenant that was using the property for automotive repair that did get a CUP granted, uh, however, it was a condition stated that if that applicant were to leave, uh, vacate, that CUP would become voided. So now, we have a new tenant, someone who's coming in who wants to not just use the lot as, as well, it's also add-on in terms of cleaning up the lot. So the applicant will have one bay door, um, added to the site towards the rear of the property, and again, this is for automotive repair, um, and in terms of the recommendation, uh, staff recommended to deny this request, um, based upon the overlay, the property's located in the Highway forty-two overlay, and, uh, staff believes that the overlay has protected the use and visual of, the vision of what the community wants for the area and the corridor, more progressive land uses commercial, and it just did not fit into the, um, comprehensive goals of what the county has designated for the property. So again, uh, the previous use that was there before was approved by this board for approved conditional use permit, um, and the new applicant's request is coming in is for the same thing, uh, with some improvements. That recommendation for this request, uh, was to, uh, deny, um, and I believe that the applicant is here, uh, to represent, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
All right, so applicant present, please come forward. State your name, your business, and, uh, if you would like to save any money, any minutes for a rebuttal, should anybody would wanna be in opposition to your request.
Okay. Jamal Williams, sixty-five thirty-nine, Highway forty-two, Rex, Georgia.
Any minutes for rebuttal, usually two or three, so you can come back up if somebody's opposed, and then you can address them.
Okay, so just.
Two minutes?
Two minutes, good.
Please proceed.
Um, as Tyler just said, he spoke volumes for what I wanted to say, so he just added it all in, in a nutshell for me. Um, I wanna pick up where the last gentleman left off. Uh, I've utilized his location before for some of my previous businesses, and he just didn't, he didn't keep a tidy location. Since I've rented the location from my previous, from the, from the owner of the location, I've cleared, cleared the land, um, cleaned it up, stopped so much back and forth traffic from the prop, from the trailer court next to, next to the location, or adjacent to the location. Um, the owner gave me permission to stop anyone from coming over with big trucks parking, I put up signs, I've set up, um, uh, towing agreements with, uh, New Image and another one over in Henry County, uh, corner lot, so if any big trucks come onto the property, I call immediately, remove the trucks because we can't have any truck parking. So, things of that nature as far as keeping the grounds tidy, I've been doing on my end of the location. Um, I'm willing to follow any, any considerations, that's like the last, uh, owner, I mean, tenant that was there, I think they gave him some, um.
Conditions.
Some conditions, and I'm willing to follow the same, if need be.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Is there anyone here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? This is a public hearing at this time. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Not, my statement is not so much in denying this gentleman, uh, approval, but my conversation here is that the same rules apply to him, that the, the previous owner, if it is, if it comes to pass, and you pass, uh, again, the CUP, that he cannot transfer that CUP. I want the same rules for him as for the previous tenant. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Uh, Mr. McSwain, I don't see any conditions listed here.
That was correct, 'cause the staff recommendation was for deny.
Okay, what were, if you can recall, or have it in writing, what those conditions were? I think he couldn't, was not able to leave any vehicles outside, no tires or anything like that.
Okay, uh, I actually do have a copy of the conditions, thank you, tears. So, I'll read them from the previous request, and then you all can, uh, question anything that comes up. I'll just go ahead and go in order, there's actually, uh, six conditions, that was part of the previous CUP request. So, the first condition, the use of the property shall be limited to one-bay auto service center in Suite Nine, uh, no outdoor storage of tires, equipment, or service repair may be, uh, conducted outside the service bay area. Condition number two, the CUP will be issued to, uh, the gentleman at the time, Mr. Olocady only, any change in ownership will require a new CUP. Condition number three, no service on tractor-trailer trucks. Condition number four, signage must be approved by the Planning and Zoning. Uh, condition number five, no automobiles and equipment shall be stored on the unpaved areas of the site. Uh, condition number six, onsite landscaping shall be provided in areas that are suitable, such in approval of the Planning and Zoning Review of Plans. Those are the six conditions from the previous requests, uh, dating back, I believe it was two thousand, January of twenty twenty-one.
And just recently, I remember that. You have, go ahead.
Right, the only, uh, question I have is the, I think it's the first condition you read about, uh, one bay or something, I think you wanted to add a bay?
Sir, if you can come back up to the mic.
I mean, I, I agree with all of them if, if it passes, but I think you wanted to add a bay, is that correct?
If allowed, I only want to do the same exact things that were allowed to the previous.
If it has one.
Right, but I think if we were to agree to it, then that number one, I believe, would have to change, is that correct?
One bay.
It has one bay, are you currently?
It has one bay, and you wanted to add a bay?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I only want, they, they granted him one bay, he never, he never installed the bay.
Okay.
Okay.
I wanted to install the bay because of the way it sits, sun is.
Are you in agreeance with all those conditions?
Definitely, totally.
All right, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve applicant's request, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
With the conditions.
With the conditions, thank you.
I have one question.
Commissioner Davis?
When you speak of a bay, define that bay, is it external, is it internal?
Oh, external, uh, let's say four, four poles, four posts, one flat surface to, just, just for shade, not necessarily anything other than that.
So it'll be a, uh, kind of a temporary tent-like structure?
Somewhat, yeah.
Any other questions?
Chairman and Board Members, I just wanna clarify something here, so for the conditions, we were mirroring what was there before, but just to amend also for condition number two, it will state the applicant's name, uh, so you just make sure that that friendly amendment is in there as well, just to make sure, full transparency.
That, that was understood.
Okay, okay, cool.
Thank you for pointing it out. Please insert applicant's name. All right. Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next item will be item number thirty-five, BLC twenty-four oh two dash zero three nine six.
Chairman and Board Members, before we move on to this item, uh, I believe we were about to move on to item thirty-five, uh, we did receive notice from the applicant that they are running just a tad bit late to represent for this item, and would ask if the board will want to hear the county's business first, which would be item thirty-nine, uh, that's if the board agrees.
Yeah, the, the next, what, four are for the applicant?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, go ahead, if the board is, uh, good with it, and take thirty-nine. God, I'm telling you. Madam Clerk, thirty-nine?
Our next item is item number thirty-nine, BLC twenty-four oh four dash zero four zero
Good evening, um, this is a request by the Board of Commissioners to adjust the boundaries of the Highway fifty-four overlay to district on the zoning map, um, specifically seven hundred, seven forty, and seven eighty, uh, Flint River Road. Um, and our request is because these three properties do not have actual fronteds on Highway fifty-four, they are on Flint River, they're, um, they don't have any kind of side prop, uh, side property lines on Highway fifty-four, so that's what, uh, our, our, we would like- So that's what we would like to do. Staff recommendation approval, Zach's recommendation was approval as well.
Okay, this is board initiated a request, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in favor of the request? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do have one, just for point of clarification.
Commissioner Davis.
So that folks in the audience will know as well, when we speak of overlay, what is that? What is that overlay, and how does this go into benefiting us with that overlay?
So overlays can include restrictions on uses or permission of uses. It also has additional, or can have additional development standards. For instance, the Highway fifty-four does prohibit condominiums and townhomes, as well as requires a certain minimum square footage.
Thank you. Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Who made the motion in the second?
I made the motion. Second was Commissioner Hamper.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I think we should move to item number twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, yes, please.
Okay, that is going to be Resolution twenty-two four dash one thirty-five, which is BLC twenty-four zero-four dash zero-four zero-eight, which is a text amendment.
This is a request to the Board of Commissioners to amend Article One, Section one point five definitions and Article Six, Section six dot fifty-one regarding the small box discount variety stores. Section of one point five defined words, staff is proposing a new number two, which says retail stores which do not sell items required to be sold in a full-service grocery, which are located within a permitted shopping center that contains not less than seventy-five thousand square feet of retail space, which are located within a shopping center that has been operating as a permitted shopping center in Clayton County for a period of not less than twenty consecutive years. The other amendment was to Section six dot fifty-one. The proposal is to move Subsection D to be under Subsection C three. And it was, so C three is whether the proposed use is within a food desert as defined by the United States Department of Agriculture at the time of application. And therefore, what this is saying is that if the CUP is granted within a food desert, the discount variety store must provide ten percent of their floor area dedicated to fresh produce meat and dairy products. Staff's recommendation was approval, Zach's recommendation was approval within edit, and I read Zach's edit.
All right, this again is a board requested item, and we're going into public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this board's request? Please come. Yes, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I'm here for more clarification about this request that you're asking for. Is it, to my understanding, that this is going to limit so-called dollar stores? If that be the case, yes, I'm in favor of limiting these so-called dollar stores because they are not an asset to our community. They, the parking lots stay filthy, giving rise to our roadways being filthy. And need I say anymore? Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? No. And this is, speaking in favor of?
In favor of, yes. First of all, thank you for your time. My name's Stuart Wallace, I'm actually from Chatham County in Savannah. I'm in favor of this petition largely because my understanding, based on what I've heard from staff, is that the intention of this proposed amendment is to suppress the unintended consequences of the original ordinance that was enforced. For instance, we have a property owner locally in Clayton County that has a shopping center that has a full-service grocery store. Our understanding being that the true intent of this ordinance was to eliminate or suppress the effect of food deserts or the exacerbation thereof, that what Clayton wants is full-service grocery stores that sell healthy food at affordable prices that don't, you know, aren't being replaced by Dollar Generals or Family Dollars or those types of things that sell them at marked-up prices and less healthy food. So the property owner in question has a Food Depot shopping center in the shopping center that they own. And it's one of those things where they can't attract other tenants. Like, for instance, we're dealing with a Five Below. I don't know if you guys are familiar with what Five Below is. It technically fits the definition of a small box discount variety store as applied by the existing ordinance, but they don't sell the same things that Dollar General or a Family Dollar sell. It's more geared towards, you know, teens, pre-teens, that kind of thing, to buy things that they can afford. And it's more of like a fun store than, you know, come here, buy your groceries, buy toilet paper, buy all that stuff. So our understanding is that this kind of reels in those unintended consequences, makes this more narrow to what this gentleman just spoke about, and doesn't apply to a more broader retail tenant, if that makes sense. So, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? Opposition, come forward, Ms. Tally.
Teresa Tally, Hampton, Georgia. I would like to say, these dollar stores don't need any approval of anything. They only have one person working, they give you all a good picture. But when you go in them, whether it's Family Dollar, Dollar General, or Dollar Tree, they have one person working to register, that same person have to put up the merchandise, that same person have to do security. We just need them to leave Clayton County, go find another county. Clayton County is not for it. Please do not allow them anything. See, you all might not go to the dollar stores. I do, because you think it's convenient, but when you go in there, the line is so long, everybody is so frustrated, even the one person that's working is frustrated. Please don't, please don't, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? No? No, we're in opposition now. Anybody else in opposition? All right, Mr. Reed.
Before you all make a vote, what I'd like to do is also just make sure that you all are clear and make it clear for the record of what you all are voting on. The county does not target any business. So this, this policy was designed to prevent, I think as one of the speakers said before, the unintentional creation of food deserts where a full-service grocery store would be replaced by a store that sold food that was not overall healthy for the citizens. And when this ordinance was initially put in place, the way that it was initially drafted, it required any store that met certain criteria that had to sell food and certain fresh vegetables, meat and dairy products, regardless of whether it was in a food desert. So after being, after that issue was pointed out to us, then that's what led us to come back to present to the board that change, and also to make sure that where there were any issues relating to existing businesses that were trying to put in small box discount variety store, that we're tightening it up to where it's only, it's limited in certain particular areas. But I just want to make it clear that this board is not targeting any particular industry or particular merchandise, or, you know, manufacturer, Dollar General, Dollar Tree, anything like that. This is really designed to prevent food deserts.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have something too. Can we go back to, I guess, maybe like the improvements or whatever, the changes? Yes. Okay. Okay, yeah, I wanted to see that one, but, okay. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Madam Clerk, let's proceed on, you know the applicant is not here with the next one.
Chairman, you said you would like to proceed with item number thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is item number thirty-five, BLC twenty-four zero-two dash zero-three nine-six, which is for a future land use map amendment.
Okay, Chairman and board members, I did get notice that the owner is here to speak on this request. So my approach to this, given that these two projects are so close together, I'm just going to present them in a way that you all can see the picture entirety. Thank you, Terrence. So this first petition that you all are hearing first is the future land use map amendment for the property that's located, as mentioned on Madonna Road, so that's four eighty-seven Madonna Road in Hampton, Georgia. The request is to change the future land use map amendment from conservation residential to low-density residential for a single-family detached lot development. The property itself is five point five seven acres of land. The applicant has a rezoning petition that is going concurrently with this as well. To kind of give you all an idea of the location of this property, this piece does have a water collection in the back, it's a pond that's in the rear. And again, there are certain uses in terms of what it's zoned for now that can be potentially rezoned for. So agriculture, this is usually for residential lots for an acre and a half for development. And again, the reason for this petition is so the applicant can rezone it to low-density residential so they can develop it, subdivide it for multiple lots. So again, the current look at the area, outlook of the area, there is a purple star located where the pond is on the map, showing you all just the idea of how it's currently zoned for the property. The future land use map amendment, the current future land use map area does show that majority of the property or parcels in this area have a density range from, that goes to RS one eighty agriculture and conservation residential. So with this request, we understand in order to achieve the current layout that you're seeing on the map now, and again, that's to subdivide that, which is pretty much one lot and subdivide into two four lots, that this can only be achieved in order to do the zoning is to change the future land use map amendment for this property. Going to the other parcel in question, given that these are so close, again, the property that you all are looking at is this first piece in white here, that's McDonald Madonna Road. And the other piece is the other whiting-out parcel or block on Turner Road, which has been shown on the graphic before you. Again, this is the same applicant, and they're proposing to build single-family residential homes in this area that will range from a two-story, one-story. There's different options that they want to allow, but they all will have to meet the county's code regulations for architectural standards. Here is a few pictures of the samples of what they're proposing. Again, if you've ever been out in the area, know that there's different older homes that are out there. Some are kind of more ranch-based. But again, the applicant is trying to build something that is allowed and is used currently in that zoning district. So I'll go to the recommendation for the future land use map amendment. Staff's recommendation for this was approval. The zoning advisory board did recommend the denial of the future land use map amendment, and the reason being that they didn't feel that the request was in view with the existing housing portfolio out there and the character of the area. So again, this is just for the future land use map amendment for this first piece on Madonna Road, and I could be able to answer any questions you may have for staff.
All right, will the petition or the owner, please come forward. State your name for us on whether or not you want to save any minutes for a rebuttal.
My name is Randall Dost, and I would like to save a couple of minutes for a rebuttal.
All right, I'll give you two minutes, please proceed, sir.
Okay, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Randall Dost, representing ASCAN U.S. Residential Real Estate Corp. And I'm the applicant seeking to rezone four eighty-seven McDonald Road and eleven zero four nine Turner Road from agricultural to RS one eighty. I retained Raquel Obumba of Creative Community Concepts to assist me with the rezoning request for these two parcels. Right now, she's currently serving in the capacity of a precinct manager for the election today, and she should be here anytime now. I do have the copies, if you'd like to have a closer look at the zoning.
We got them all squared.
But you have them, okay. If granted this rezoning request, we'd like to divide the four eighty-seven McDonald into four lots and eleven zero four five nine Turner Road into two lots, each lot being more than one acre each. The intent of this subdividing is to create opportunities for individuals to build new homes. We would not be doing the developing ourselves. We would be selling the vacant lot, and they would be customizing it according to the specifications that the county gives. While the elevations presented are one option to consider, the buyer will be able to do what he likes within the standards of the county. But we anticipate the homes will be within substantial conformity with the surrounding homes in the area. The road frontage, the road frontage minimums that are required within the agriculture zoning unnecessarily limit the number of parcels we will be able to create through subdividing, which is why we're seeking to rezone the parcels to RS one eighty. If granted this rezoning request, we would exceed the minimum lot size requirement of eighteen thousand square feet substantially, as all six lots are over one acre. We anticipate the homes will be valued in the high three hundreds and low four hundreds once construction is complete. Although there will be six new homes constructed in the future, we do not anticipate, once construction is complete, that these homes will have any significant impact on traffic, with less than a dozen new cars in the area, and those cars being divided into two separate areas on different streets. This zoning should not be in any way disrupt the agricultural living and landscape the current neighbors have come to enjoy. In fact, we feel that the additional few homes we have asked to rezone will have a positive impact on the safety in the area as more eyes will be able to keep an eye on neighbors' property entrances and be a deterrent to potential vandals and thieves. Raquel did want me to point out that there's at least ten lots within a quarter-mile radius of these properties, which are currently non-conforming based on the sizes of the lots and their current zoning. This means if any of these property owners want or need to do any significant work on their homes, they will first have to seek a variance or apply for a rezoning before applying for a permanent. There are four lots located within point three miles, just a few minutes down the street, which are currently zoned RS one-ten, which is a. which is a denser zoning than the RS-one-eighty that we're seeking and proves that this request to rezone these parcels is not out of the current norm. We feel these new homes will positively contribute to the areas developed, increase the county's tax base, and provide opportunities for more people to become homeowners in Clayton County. I thank you for your consideration and welcome any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of?
Hello, Mia Ballinger, District Four. Even though I'm not in that district, it would be nice to see houses as opposed to so many apartments. And, I mean, what do you say? So pretty much, you know, yeah. I don't see why not. Beautiful homes. You go to Fayetteville, you go to Henry County, you go to all of these other counties, they are beautiful houses, but we're steadily bringing apartments, which is causing so much chaos in apartments. Not saying because, you know, people can't afford them, but I would say yes. So please, yeah, finally.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
How you doing, sir?
I'm well. State your name for us, please.
How's the election going?
Can't talk about that, but.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name for me.
Larry Phillips, one-one-five-two-one Turner Road. One-one-five-two-one Turner Road. I own thirty acres on Turner Road. One of the reasons I bought there was my grandkids. I'll be honest with you. They're three minutes away. But I bought there because my grandkids and the way the area is set up, it is very, very community-orientated. And you're talking about bringing in, and I don't mind him building houses the way it is right now, the way it's set up. But you're talking about four more houses on McDonough Road and he says it won't impact the traffic? He ain't been down McDonough Road at seven o'clock in the morning and five o'clock in the afternoon. Then he's going to put two houses on Turner Road. You can't even run two cars side by side down Turner Road. Somebody has to take the ditch. And where he's wanting to put the two houses on Turner Road, and I didn't bring any pictures, I wish I could, should have, there are at least thirty deer that come from that pond down there, cross over, go to Mr. Max's hundred-and-something acres over there, go around, come back down on my thirty acres, come back down to the Flint River. Besides that, we got Hurricane Creek, which floods the back of a lot of people's homes, not mine, but the ones across the street from me. Nothing's been done about that. And so this is the issue. In Clayton County, all you want to do is build, build, build. But nobody wants to take the opportunity to look at the flooding. You should see Flint River when only two inches of rain come. You should see Hurricane Creek, which is coming almost up to a hundred feet of some of these people's backyard right now, which nobody will address. Just please leave it like it is. That's all I ask. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Crystal Ingles. I live on Turner Road, one-one-four-four-four. My family and I just bought our property. It will be two years ago at the end of, or no, next week. We bought it to have our dream home. We wanted a farm. We wanted to begin a business off of it. And we have some livestock now. We have things in the works. But I also want to challenge you to, or maybe remind you, we're not talking about just a few acres. We're talking about the entire extent of Turner Road and McDonough Road because we will all be very much impacted on this. And yes, the flooding is getting dangerously close to our secondary barn. We were told it's a no-flood zone, but it's not. So, and all of these houses being built, we're learning is because it is creating or adding to the water runoff. So I think that additional houses will only increase that. Also, the traffic, yes, as Larry said, traffic is horrendous. It's very difficult getting off and on Turner Road onto McDonough or vice versa. And a lot of that, oh, I wanted to also state that we did have two accesses on Turner Road. We no longer do. We only have one and that's on McDonough because there are two older bridges that were shut down because of the flooding. So that means all of us residents will be trapped. And several have experienced emergencies where emergency vehicles, first responders, could not get there because of traffic. And, oh, I also wanted to add that the majority of the residents on Turner are older. Some are totally retired. Some have been there for many, many years, decades. And it's gorgeous out there. That's why we chose it.
Next, please.
Good evening, I'm Desiree Talent. I'm at one-one-five-eight-four Turner Road. I'm going to talk quick because time's running and there's a lot of people. So some highlights, I just want to advocate for agriculture in general. For Georgia, there are over forty-two thousand farms on over nine million acres of Georgia. And that's because Georgia prides itself in agriculture. There's eighty-three-point-six billion dollars worth of agricultural output. And we lead the nation in certain crops and livestock, including peanuts and chickens, pecans, blueberries, and spring onions. And we're also near the top of the nation for cotton, watermelon, and peaches. Agriculture is Georgia's largest and oldest industry. Myself and some of my neighbors, we are proud owners of land covenants. And to allow this, to allow more houses to be built, it speaks against the agricultural nature of Georgia and our community. Georgia farms have contributed to the Georgia School Nutrition Program and the Farm-to-School Initiative, allowing fifteen-point-three million dollars to be poured into local Georgia and bordering state farms to feed our youth in schools. And essentially, agriculture gives back to the land. Infrastructure does not. A house does not breed more houses, plants, and animals, breed more things that will feed you essentially. A comment was made that more houses is more peoples and more eyes to scope out my stuff is the way I hear it. Not to be negative, but more people leads to more crowding. And crowding has a negative effect on social and emotional well-being, whereas nature, agriculture, livestock, has the reverse effect. The more trees and nature you're around, it contributes to a healthier sense of well-being and psychological feelings. And then lastly, I want to share that once land has been developed, once something's on that land, it's no longer of agricultural use. So yes, building houses will remove the agricultural purpose. You cannot farm it. You cannot use it for poultry, plants, or whatever the nature, once an object or a house is sitting on it.
Pam Adamson, I live on Turner Road, Hampton. Hey. Just wanted to remind you just of a couple of things. I own ten acres on Turner Road in two different tracts, five acres each. And it's flooded with deer and all kinds of wildlife that I love and we moved there to get. But I just want you to be aware that the decision you make tonight will carry on through the rest of Turner Road. There's not a day that goes by, not one day, that I don't either get a phone call or multiple phone calls or texts or emails or something through the mail that says, "We want to buy your land. We want to buy your land." And you're going to have the same thing over and over and over. These folks represent Turner Road and it's only half of it, I'm pretty sure, because the other's on the other side of the creek that you won't let us cross anymore. Amen. So I'm going to ask you to stand with these people that comprise Turner Road instead of a developer. Thank you.
My name's Toni Cribs. I live at eleven-eight-sixty Turner Road. I've been there almost twenty years. Everything they've said, I feel the same way. I chose that area because it was secluded and you can, you know, just do what you want out there. It's beautiful out there. And we have lovely neighbors. They come out and they stand up. We stand together with each other. So whatever they said, I agree. We don't want it to change.
Next.
My name is Tenzin N. Montgomery. I live at one-one-two-nine-six Turner Road. This is my next-door neighbor. First thing I want to say, the first young man who spoke, he is accurate. Two cars cannot drive down Turner Road at the same time. Someone has to pull over while the other person goes. And then in the morning time, you leave out to make a right or a left on McDonough Road, there's no lights. So we're there for a good moment of time before we can even get, get off of Turner Road to McDonough Road. And then we have a lot of water in our backyard. My husband has horses. And I fell a couple of times. Like when it rains, it gets really sloshy and muddy. Now, I'm not sure of the reason why, but from my understanding from being here today is because of the overcrowding or the building. And I also want to say that I believe in making things nice. I'm a full-time realtor. But there are so many abandoned homes or homes that no one is taking care of Clayton County. If you feel sincere about making beautiful homes, you can invest in homes that are already here. That's not in our area that already has been zoned for agricultural use.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm the property owner of eleven-five-nine-nine. I am the last property owner in the middle of Turner before the defunct bridges. And my other neighbor is here on the other side, you know, one of them kind of deals. The river actually splits into two and it's two real low-lying bridges.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you got caught on the low end. That your time.
Am I too low? You ain't get louder.
But trust me, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay. We, I don't want to be redundant in all the point.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Oh, jeez.
Sorry about that. All right. Thank you. Y'all can have a seat, please. Mr. Dost? No, sir. That time, that time is up. Get twenty minutes, uh, ten minutes. You got a rebuttal in two minutes worth?
Yep, yep, I do. I believe Raquel has broken this into approval for zoning change for our two lots plus the zoning in the area. I made notes of their concerns. When it comes to traffic, I mean, we're talking a half a dozen cars split between two. I mean, there's two lots on Turner Road, which might be two or three cars. And then on the other one, where there's four lots, I mean, there might be five or six cars. That's a negligible impact that we would have on either of those two roads. And even with the way it's set up agriculturally now, I mean, I could divide that into three lots and there still would be six or seven cars. We're only asking for one extra. It's going to end up being one extra lot on each, one extra parcel on each lot for a total of two. So we're not asking for a big change from what there is now. I'm not sure what the impacts of flooding are. Definitely not on our two parcels there's any impact whatsoever. And there was also discussion about the agricultural in the area. Along McDonough Road, there's, in our area, there's no agricultural in that particular area. There's no agricultural anymore. It's all, the lots that are there, even across the street, which you can't see there, but they're, they're close to, they're non-conforming, but they are a hundred-and-fifty-square-foot, sorry, a hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage already, non-conforming. Supposed to be two-hundred, they're at one-fifty. So you can see how narrow those lots are. We're only asking for the same thing that's already in the area. And if you just go down left a little bit on that map, you've got the high-density areas at RS-one-ten already. So we're only just continuing the look of the area and the same zoning that's already been done all around our area.
Okay, so let me ask you a question.
Sure.
When we met and spoke on this matter, I believe I had asked, did you meet with the community neighbors and so forth? Did y'all hold a town hall meeting or a community meeting?
Uh, we didn't have a town hall meeting unless Raquel did.
So you did not, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, we did not.
Not speak with the people in that community?
Right. Well, we talked to the neighbors when we were on a different lot. We were talking to the neighbors across the street and we told them what we were doing. They didn't have any issue with it.
Okay, so two things need to happen, for me, anyway. First of all, there should have been some dialogue or discussion with the community and the neighbors. And the second is, is concerned about this flooding that I'm hearing about now. Need to get with my Office of Resiliency and Sustainability and take a look. And there are some things that we are doing in funding that we have in place that will address the Flint River and the flooding that flows from the top of Clayton County south. So there might be some, some ways to rectify some of that. But I need to take a closer look at their concerns and what they're talking about before I make any kind of decision on this. So I say all that to say, I want to, if you're willing, otherwise we can go forward, with tabling thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight until June, next board meeting, next zoning hearing is June, what?
Eighteenth.
June eighteenth. So I can go down and so you can have opportunity or the company to talk to these neighbors as well as for me to see firsthand some of their concerns because their concerns are our concerns. And flooding is a real problem. So I want to take a look at that. So if you're willing to be open to table it until June eighteenth, then we'll circle back around.
Yep.
And that is, Mr. Reed?
So what my recommendation would be is for you, because the only issue that you all heard of public hearing on was number thirty-five, is to make a decision on that and then make a separate decision on items thirty-six through thirty-eight. So item thirty-five will be, if you're, if it's the board's desire, to table that to June eighteenth.
Yes.
That will be for decision only.
Right.
Items thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight will be a separate motion to table until June eighteenth for a public hearing.
So can we take thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight together or do we need to do each of those individually?
You can do them separately, I mean, all together.
Okay. So right now, my motion on the table with permission of the petitioner is to table item thirty-five until June eighteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
I do have one comment.
Okay.
I'm hoping that when you meet with these residents, that we look at preserving the culture of how they live. Just because there's land available, I, you know, I think Clayton County needs to progress in a very smart way. And some folks do enjoy that agricultural life. And I want to make sure that we're not impeding on that lifestyle.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next motion I'd like to make, it will be to table items thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight until June eighteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions on those items? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just so that the community understands, that they will be able to come back-
Yes.
-and have a public hearing on thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight, to have any comments for those who weren't able to speak today.
So, just for clarification purposes, for those who are here and out of concern for this request, the one that we had public comment hearing on, we will not have a public hearing next time it's up in June eighteenth. The other three will have public hearing at that time. So, you are definitely always welcome to come to all of our meetings, but if you want to still come and speak or voice your concerns, June eighteenth, we're going to take this up again. But, we will have some conversation before then. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes. Want me to wait until?
Yeah, give it just a minute. All right, Madam Clerk?
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given a total of two minutes, maximum time, to speak before the board, with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Please note, comments must be limited to matters on the agenda, over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Johnny Brown. Johnny Brown. Sarah Johnson. Sarah Johnson. Correll Johnson. Rita Clark. Rita Clark. Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next legitimate speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Sinidria Potter.
Hello. My name's Sinidria Potter, Jonesboro, Georgia. I just wanted to talk today, I've talked to some of you in this room. I am dealing with a property that I need immediate assistance on in Jonesboro. It's a non-conforming property. I've been dealing with this property for twenty months, trying to get open. And I'm days away from losing my property. So, I need to get on the calendar to present the entire case, but I know that's the third Tuesday of every month, and by the next third Tuesday, I will not own this property anymore. So, I need immediate assistance with this issue that I'm having with this property. And I need to have assurance that there is some type of policies and procedures put in place when a non-conforming property comes through the county. Because these are atypical, unique properties that are not going to fit the mold. And there has to be some type of procedure in place so that no other property owner has to go through what I've been experiencing for twenty months. Thank you.
Mr. J K., I know you've been working with her on this. Is there anything you can add to what she's telling us?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Yeah, it has taken quite a bit to get where she is right now. The brief history of the property there, in the past, it was used as residential, and it was non-conforming, the way it was zoned.
Mr. J K., where is?
Huh?
I'm sorry, where, where is this property?
It's-
Actually, in City of Jonesboro.
That's right, off, off-
It runs from the Quick Trip.
Quick Trip, behind me, uh, Quick Trip. And what happened is that, when the plans got submitted, and when they started that renovation, and part of the code is that when you start touching non-conforming structures like that, you invoke other parts of the code. So, when they went in there, it could not be developed as residential. There were things on the plan that inspectors saw. Part of the issue was, there was almost like a triangle conversation between her, the architect, so they were going, and some of the reviews. I went out there, that's initially, when this guy started, say, okay, you can do this, but it requires plans to be submitted. Then, when the plans got submitted, then inspectors started seeing some of the issues. So, what we're working out right now is, there is a comment that got sent back to them, I think yesterday, that's still not met. So, what we're trying to do is get the architect to really, and the general contractor, to address what the code is saying. Once they address it, he can do that. So, that's the back and forth that it's going there.
So, what is this, about the twenty days?
Twenty months.
Twenty months, yeah.
Twenty months that you've been-
Twenty months, okay.
Yeah.
So, is there a timeline?
Yeah, there's a timeline. What happened is that, when she came in and submitted her plans, I can't explain exactly what happened in that twenty months, but, but what was happening is that, it's either the architect or the general contractor was not responding. The chief building inspector actually went out there himself, looked at things, made suggestions of what needs to be corrected. But, what happened is that, if what has been discussed is not reflected on the plans, then I'm going to approve it. So, there is delay in responding to, to, um, red, um, the red line comment.
So, is this a new house?
No, that's an existing structure that we acknowledged that is there. Even fire department gave us an advice that it has been a long-time existing structure.
With the same problem?
Well, in the past-
I'm just wondering what-
It never, in, in, in the past, it never came in the way it came in. She acquired it, trying to use it, then tried to make some improvements to the property. That is how all this got started, yeah. And I would say to the applicant, we can have a quick meeting tomorrow with the architect, because what happened is that, we need to know what it is the architect is not responding to. The moment they do the plans, we can issue the permit. We just want them to comply to the code. And we, I would like to talk to the architect tomorrow morning directly, and see what it is they're not complying with.
So, is this living quarters, or is it a business?
I think it's both.
This property has eight apartments and two office spaces. This property has operated for twenty years in Clayton County, with these same issues that they're holding me up about. Operated for twenty years. I bought the property with my son to develop the community, to provide eight apartments for eight people, and, but I've been sitting for twenty months idle. And now, it just got vandalized again, for the sixth time. I have done everything that I'm supposed to do. The architect did not make a mistake. This is a non-conforming property, it's atypical, it's non-conforming because the previous owner was allowed to construct this and operate it for twenty years. I'm trying to improve it. I'm trying to make it better, make it less non-conforming, and I've been held up at every angle. I made sure that everyone saw this property in person, because it's not the kind of property you can look at over the phone or for some plans. I made sure that everybody, even Mr. J K., came and saw this property in person. I did a zoning verification before I bought the property. So, this has actually been going on for more than the twenty months that I've had it. I started before I bought it. I'm a twenty-three-year certified appraiser. I've served this community for twenty-three years, and I recognized it as an abnormal property. I brought it in before I bought it and did a zoning verification. They approved my, everybody came in person. They took several months, they approved my permit, I got started. Nova came in to do the rough inspection and said, you can't do this. You should have never been approved for this. So, now at twenty months, I'm having to go through the entire permit process over again, even though it had already been approved. And at twenty months, it has created such a financial hardship on me, that I'm here pleading for assistance, because I've held on as long as I can to this commercial property for twenty months of holding costs with nothing coming in. And I'm just trying to get open. I'm trying to make it a better place in the community. It's, everyone was aware of it, it operated for twenty years, and now I'm being the hammer dropped down on me for all these non-conformities that's been there for twenty years.
Mr. J K., you going to say something?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The permit was actually, the process, and I really feel for her, because I went out there myself to look at it. The initial zoning aspect of it, I gave the go-ahead for us to do it. Then, when they submitted the permit, the permit was issued. She actually has a permit. Where it got stuck is, when they got there, when the inspectors got to the property, what the improvements they were seeing was improvement that made them to slow it down, to say, hey, we need to look at what you guys are doing. You, you changing the property where it's affecting the non-conformity. It's not, if they were going to use exactly what I saw, the way it was, is the improvements that were being made to it that triggered the rest of the issues.
I guess the architect. Is the architect available tomorrow?
I, I just, yeah, I just told her if she-
I will, I will reach out to him, but understand, this architect was paid over a year ago to do these plans.
Understand.
And he's been asked to do three or four revisions, and now he's even, you know, slow to get in contact with me, because this is over a year ago. This is the same property. I did not deviate at all, Mr. J K.
Well, listen, we are definitely-
We can look at it, it's on paper, we can look at the-
We hear you, and we can't, we're not going, I guess, keep on debating back and forth. We know that something's not right, so, we're going to get you where you need to be, so we can try to hurry up and get you finished with this project. So, Mr. J K., everything you can do, please, please, let's get this, this, continue to move.
Aresha?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
And just one thing, so, am I going to have the opportunity to present the whole thing, or is this meeting that we have tomorrow is going to be that?
We, we go off of what they, what they recommend. If you can get with him and get everything that needs to be done, then he'll let us know what the next step, so the process is from there.
Okay, and just one, on record, that I've asked for this over and over, I've asked in person, this is non-conforming.
And, and let me say this, and I'm not saying that you have not, but whatever they're saying that they need from you, please try to get it as expeditiously as possible, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Tony Cribbs. Baron Tiller. Teresa Tally.
Teresa Tally, Hampton, Georgia. It's grass season. There are local ordinance, where residents and businesses don't cut their grass, they are giving citations. Who gives G.DOT and the county a citation for not cutting the grass? Code enforcement and the refuse control need help with this ongoing problem. While the prisoners do an excellent job with cutting, picking up the trash, edging, and trimming, they cannot keep up the requests in the entire county. Creating a second-choice job for the prisoners when they get out would be an excellent move. I understand grass should be mowed during peak season, but Clayton County is severely behind in this task. Some areas never get cut. Some areas get cut bi-weekly. Some areas get one or two lines of cut. One area in particular is on McDonald Road going to Stock Bridge. They never get mowed the entire street. They always stop for some reason. Trash and glass is always left behind. State Row 54 is a nightmare. G.DOT fixed it, but now they have really abandoned. They need to be reported to the state government district. Creating a year-round job for mowing would create a healthy look. Mandatory trash was approved instantly. Will you all consider additional help for grass cutting? It is a major problem. Thank you.
Crystal Ingles. Crystal Ingles. Mike Maloney.
He left.
Sherry Davis. David Hammer.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, good evening. David Hammer, District Three, Clayton County. Folks, I'd like to have a little, I guess, announcement. That push come to shove, despite some of the pushback, our new ethics bill was signed into law, HB 1444, which means come July 1st, we will have a new ethics procedure for our county. We will move it forward. Unfortunately, we had some elected officials didn't like this. I don't know why, when you talk about transparency, accountability, and ethics, why would you not vote for ethics? The main thing the board has to do now, you don't have to worry about assigning people, appointments. The only thing the board is now charged with legally, according to this law that Governor Kemp signed in, will be to fund this. However, the appointments will come through the Supreme Court, which is great, Tax Commissioner's office, and of course, the grand jury will vet and inspect each person that will be assigned to ethics, which makes the board completely autonomous in its own right. And I think that's the way it should be, that's what we pushed for. They will stand on their own without any nepotism, cronyism, and/or owing anyone anything. So, thank goodness, in a few weeks, unfortunately, you guys will have something else to deal with, but most of the stuff in this bill, human resources already taken care of. As an ex-employee, I know that they cover a lot of stuff in this bill, so you don't have to deal with it, it's already covered. And thank you very much for your courtesy and your time. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Mr. Reed, is there a need for executive session? Why'd you say yeah? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, I had stated that there would not be a need, but there became a need for an emergency item for personnel. And that's the only issue.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel? Can I make a comment first, Chairman? Just quickly. Go ahead, Commissioner Davis. Troy Hodges, could you dance on up here, please? You know, this is Troy Hodges', last board meeting that he has to be at. So, I just want to say that we appreciate your service to Clayton County and all that you've done, and we're going to miss you, man, we're going to miss you. I appreciate it. So, I just want to say thank you for your service. And if you'd like to make your Easter speech, give us a song and dance, we're more than welcome.
No, I've thoroughly enjoyed my thirty-two years with the county, and it's, it shows that, you know, employees can really work their way all the way up through the ranks, so, I do appreciate it and appreciate everything that's been done for me.
Thank you for your service. Yep, thank you for all you've done. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel? So moved. All second, those in favor, aye? Opposed, it is unanimous. Madam Clerk, are you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to reconvene? So moved. Uh, second, those in favor, aye? Those opposed, it's unanimous. Yes, Mr. Stanford?
Yes, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner Hambrick. What I bring forth to you, in light of the retirement of Director Troy Hodges, we would ask that the board consider serving or appointing Troy Stubbs as the interim director effective May 25th.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Uh, second motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, it is unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. All second, those in favor, aye? Those opposed, it's unanimous.